This is Greg Prothman from the Prothman Private Company. And he's met today with the city councilors and city manager, John Hitt and myself. And we're here to get some public input. We have three letters that we received from people who couldn't make it tonight. Oh, and actually, OK, so she's here also. And so we've got some input from those folks. And then if you want to go ahead and take it.
Great. Sure. And the purpose of what I'm hoping to hear is about the skills, talents, and abilities that we're looking for in our new city manager. So as the mayor pointed out, I met with each councilor, yes, correct her.
That was a woman.
Councillor.
Can be a long, boring hand.
Met with department directors today. Obviously, the majority of them, all of them. Didn't have a chance to meet with John.
Oh.
I just need to know where to check tomorrow by cellphone or by phone. So they've got a lot of input. But I'm also very curious to hear what each of you, I also have, say, internal skills and talents and abilities that we might be looking for. And those things that might make this person a fit with this community, that might lead to why you choose to live and work here and stay here. So those are the ones that I'm hoping to get forward and get back and give to feedback. Somebody in size you might have, Greg.
Well, take the mic, you two.
I submitted mine in writing.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I really didn't plan on speaking, but since we have such a big audience.
Well, I'm glad that you're here and you probably can't help it.
I had eaten vegetables.
She's not really good at zipping it.
So I'm Shelley Garen. I'm the chamber director.
Hi, Shelley. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you two. Thanks for doing this. And I imagine when folks get off work, they might come in. The city manager, from my perception, is probably one of the most important decisions this group has to make in the next four years. Hopefully, it's the last big horrible decision they have to make. But the way the communities proceed is all kind of about the city manager. John has a great reputation in that he's very forward-thinking and he considers growth in a careful way. And he's led the charge for the friendly kind of atmosphere that we encourage developers to approach us in. And I would love to see that same welcoming towards developers and people that are looking at investing in our community, but with that same planning and careful love for our community's size so that it grows appropriately and not crazy. There's a place called Redlands, California, that has a lot of beautiful old homes. It's very old, and they have a concert in the park kind of a thing. And in the middle of these beautiful old homes are these giant apartment complexes every two or three houses. It looks so bizarre. It's really great to have growth because we need that. But it needs to be proper, and we have a planning department that takes care of that. But again, the leader is our city manager. So he sends out the message in the tone in which they behave and they work. So that's important. The reputation of the city with other communities and with the government and our governor's office is important. So someone very professional that looks out for us and watches for opportunities for us to be in front of the governor or people that are looking to build a plant or some kind of industry. So I guess it's, I don't know where you're going to find a person that perfect because they're sort of a person that fits wherever the audience is. They can sit down and talk with citizens and make them understand and be compassionate, and that's really important. And then they can also communicate with the governor's office or his committee and then go with his peers in other communities. So it's a hard job to find, but I know that there's somebody out there because we've been very fortunate. We have, don't get big heads, but we have a really good city council and mayor, and they're working together towards this. So I have complete confidence they're going to find the right person. That's all I have to say.
Well, the mic, thank you. Thank you.
And Amy Tate, you didn't want to?
No, I put mine in.
OK, all right. And you were good, right?
No, it was very articulate. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Well, just a quick summary of what I've heard so far. Since we have a few minutes, I'll fill the void here for a minute or two. The difference is I've heard a lot of consistency. Your comments, very well spoken, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were very consistent with what I've heard today. You did have nice comments that I hadn't heard, though, which was on ensuring that the control of growth, new ideas, community values, sort of comments that you were alluding to, wanting to keep those kinds of things in place in addition to all the other stuff I've heard. But you did touch on communication. That was a big topic today, Andrew, for everybody. Somebody that can communicate up to council, you know, both corporately and individually, out to the directors, you know, both, again, as a team, seeing those folks as a good, well-functioning, high-functioning team, as well as individually, helping to set goals and expectations for the departments. By the way, does everyone hear me OK? Is it better if I use a microphone?
Use a mic.
It'd probably be better if you used a mic. Yeah. We'd have to do.
Can you just press that face-to-face button?
OK. I am occupied. So, hi, I'm Greg Prothman. I'm from Seattle today. What I was hearing and saying is that communication is a big factor. Up to council, both corporately and individually, out to the directors, trying to form a new team and reform the high-functioning team as well, individually, making sure that they're heard. The directors' cell is important, I think, for the managers to be able to have that one-on-one relationship with each other, for those directors to frankly express their opinions, both positive and negative. It's occasionally, not that it happens every person in a week, but the manager's wrong once in a while. And not, any good manager relies upon their key management staff to help keep them grounded, keep them focused, and also stop them from going off the cliff. So that was real important. One, someone who can help facilitate communication between the directors and the council. That also came up, in both directions, because frankly, they're your subject matter experts. And so when you need information as to how things are going or a specific thought on a technical area, those are the folks you want to talk with. Communication out to your municipal partners in the fire district, the schools, the hospital, the state agencies, you know, and it's plethora of others out there that are very important that you can stay, contact them in touch with. But the manager, again, sets a tone for that. To be out with the constituents in the community, both ones who are supportive of the city, but especially those who might have a critical viewpoint, you know, like actually might be right. And if we don't hear from them and encourage their participation and treat them with respect and hear what they have to say, we may be missing an opportunity. So that also came up today in the conversation. I think, you know, ensuring that this person's personal, they're honest, they're straightforward, they're credible, they, you know, have good ethics and morals, and those all came up. I wanted to make sure that we had a high-quality person here. Someone that's fit with the community, a minimum of five to seven-year tenure, probably seven to 10, with most people's preferences. Don't want a jobhopper, don't want someone who is, using this as a stepping stone. And you want to make sure this person was engaged, no matter where they've worked their career. You know, we don't discriminate by age, but we want to make sure that the person is coming for their last comp, getting their feet on the desk, and treating them as a 30-hour-a-week job. So those were all important factors that came up. Can we review my notes, see what else I may have missed? You know, everybody, I think, wants a progressive manager in terms of their management techniques and skill sets, but wants a conservative financial manager. Someone that really is, is, recognizes where the financial time is here and has a good conservative viewpoint. Efficiencies came out within the city, you know, within the comments, want to make sure directors, and we're expanding our money and being efficient as we can. Maybe some have said even private sector sort of viewpoint might be helpful in how we would go about government and continuing to get better, continuing to look at efficiencies came up. Trust is what that came up consistently through everybody's comments. And that goes hand in hand with the communication side of what was commented earlier, that building trust, building trust with your partners, building with your municipal partners, with council members, with staff members, with community members, even those community members who are critical of what is occurring in the city. This still has to be that trust. They can help and approach this manager, and they'll be heard. They're unlikely to hear, but at least you have that ability to have that conversation. Sense of humor was also mentioned, a hundred implications. Leadership at the staff level was mentioned a bunch of times. A good listener, someone who's also good communicator, but who also listens and really understands and listens to what someone's saying. Stable work histories, I mentioned before, some of them has a work history that's demonstrated in five to seven or 10 years, and some of those two and a half years, a year and a half in jobs, and bounces around. So that work history that we can validate and as an indicator of that there were patterns is what we're looking for also. Someone mentioned, there are a couple of folks who mentioned someone who has tech savvy. They didn't say it's the implications of using a social media network as a communication tool. We're looking for someone who knows how to use a smartphone in addition to a computer. So I'm sure there's other points to hear that I've lost over, but really, those are the high points so far, and hopefully, a pretty consistent viewpoint.
So when you do the interviews, it would be interesting, I would think, to ask them what their vision for Lebanon would be. It would be interesting to see, first of all, their concept for us, they should have done their homework, and then what sort of future they see for Lebanon. I think that would give you some valuable processing in how they think.
You know, it's an interesting observation, and I hear that from time to time, where councils and citizens will say, you know, we want someone to help set the vision. The difficulty is, as managers, and I was a city manager for nine years, it is rarely my place as a manager to help describe the vision, it's my place to help facilitate it. And so I'd always turn that question around and say, so how will you help this council set that vision for the community? And then what part, then how would you participate in executing that vision? That might be another way of getting that.
That's a very good way to do it.
So, but that would be acceptable. Any other comments, insights, observations that might, want to add as a corporate group now over what I've heard today from today, both from individuals? Am I getting it? Am I uncapping my card here? Sounds like it at all. OK.
Yeah, water, Rebecca Lee's fall building is a single bound, but we need to walk around the water.
Well, it rains a lot, doesn't it? I mean, OK, so we'll get there.
Did also the thing about someone who wants to be invested in the community here, was that a topic too? Is that, I know that's what.
No one said anything about that at all. Actually, most everybody brought it up in, you know, in, if not the right fashion, in the ancillary fashion, because it came out of him as a fit with the community. They really wanted someone who was willing to move into this town, you know, get integrated into his activities, whether it's at the professional level or the social level, I mean, in the chamber, the road, in the lightest quarters, you know, all of that stuff, attend all of the special events. But there's a reason why people choose to live and work in Lebanon. And we're looking for a manager that has those same values, that wants those same outcomes. And that's usually the reason if they're, you know, like a skill set that makes them competent as a manager, now the next phase of that is they'll stay that five, seven, eight, 10 years, if they enjoy living here too. So one of the things I mentioned, I think everybody, maybe I just wanted to do, was I reckon it strongly that when we get out into the final interviews, we invite their creative spouses to come also. Because so much of this is a family decision, even though they have dollars, it's kind of implication of the cost of the surge.
Especially with our political least cheap issue that we had, that would be.
We can save money by Jason, we'll put a month and.
Is that your Ted's?
Yeah.
Other comments, questions, insights for me? I could talk about process, Mr. Mayor, I know we're out of a formal meeting, so I'm, but I could.
Probably should wait on that for the meeting action, process. We should probably, if we needed to, I guess, we've got a lot of extra time. I didn't expect a few more people to show up. But, yeah, I think we better wait for the process for, okay, insights.
Should I brought some champagne, Greg?
Anything else here that I missed? Let me give you a second to review my notes.
Sure, sure.
Oh, one small item that I missed, I mentioned a little economic development. That was mentioned by everyone, everybody mentioned economic development. You've got a great start and a lot of exciting initiatives in play, and they want to make sure that we find someone who has the ability to keep that ball rolling down the path, let's go in the right direction.
Augur, do you, Alex, do you want to make comments? Probably shouldn't.
Makes it easy to report out because you've got your own.
I just made it up, it doesn't matter. That's easy, too.
I just sent something up on Facebook to see if anyone.
I'm sure you guys want someone you can't work with, right?
What's that?
I'm sure you want somebody to be hard to work with.
Definitely.
Actually, not that you mention it, one of the areas that did come up was building positive relationships with the press. People have said that those relations are constrained, and actually, I think many of you, frankly, if I recall back now, have all said, you want to rebuild those relationships and have an open, transparent working relationship with government and the press. So I could quick up.
Since you've got time, there's a city manager in Brownsville, Scott McDowell. And one of the things I've observed from him, he came from the east, so he doesn't even, he didn't grow up around here. He went to a very small town, Brownsville, to be the city manager. And there's a lot of, in a small town, we have a lot of different factors, and they kind of, you know, it's a small town, they sometimes war with each other. He's demonstrated a great ability to facilitate them working together. And I, that really is a skill that very few people have. Number one, to come in from the outside in a small town and be respected. And I think his big thing is he facilitates people working together, and that would be a nice thing for you to add to your list, someone that has that ability or can demonstrate maybe in their past employment where they've helped people that were very different work together towards a successful end.
That's kind of in some of our staff, and I can comment on it because I'm the one who made the comment, and that's one of the things I said, was consensus building.
Good.
Between council and as well as staff.
I'll quit, but I mean, you had all that extra time. I hate silence.
This is your time.
Yeah, it's your time.
Oh, good. Glad I said that.
Well, it's not your time.
You can share.
Greg, you've placed probably a number of city managers around through the region. What kinds of things do you hear from candidates about what they're looking for in a community to work for?
Because a couple of numbers, covered levels, in response to that. First of all, do they have the skill sets to meet this community? To me, it's almost always what I hear. Is my background fit this community? Secondly is, so what's this council really like?
Good answer to the question.
We're on YouTube now.
Once in a while I'm honest, and I'll tell them. No, I'm always honest. I will tell them if it's a 4-3 council, if it's 5-2, if it's a commodious, if it's a law will. Each of you have described almost to a person that this is a great council now, that is, that you know how to disagree respectfully with each other, that, and you don't take it personally, and that once you may argue pretty strongly, not a point, but it's a decision that you've got to move on to the next one, you're, it's a fresh slate. And so I think it's an admirable trait, so congratulations. That puts you in the top 20% of city councils that are up there right now.
I concur.
Next is what council management team, is there any great goals there that you'd fix to, you know, does it work well together, or is it, you know? But that's, that's, that's a great order. And then the next question is, will I fit? You know, what is this community like? I can't really answer it, for sake, because I don't live here, but what I tell them is that our process, in the end, really focuses around the fit, where we try to expose them to as many aspects of the things we can. So when we get down to final interview discussions, we'll talk more about that and explore ways of helping the candidates assess their fit. And lastly, I tell them to do their homework. And what I mean by that is, not to challenge them, but to say, hey, call John. You know, call the managers in the area here. You know, here we're the strength, the weakness of our community. Because I try to give them a good set of where the challenges are, and they can assess their own skills. But we try, and you'll find in the profile, we'll come back with, you know, with the top four or five challenges for the city manager for the next six months. You know, oh, by the way, could you help craft those with John, by the way?
Sure.
Four or five challenges, and maybe review those with the mayor, make sure you're after.
I thought you were calling Linda the challenger.
That wasn't the feedback I hurried about. So that's, pardon me, that's summary, I can give you the answer. My answer is a summary.
And the reason most candidates are looking for something is what? What's the special?
Well, it could be that after eight or nine years, they're becoming, they're compatible with that community who's coming to an end as possible.
Meaning they've worn out their welcome?
You know, it's funny, this is my particular case as an example, I feel after nine years I wasn't as effective as I used to be. I just had a reaction to it. It could be the health changed its philosophy pretty dramatically, went from a very liberal council to a very conservative council, they wanted someone with a better batch, their philosophical bent, and they negotiated an exit process for the manager. It could be that, you know, there are a hundred reasons why, quality of life questions, things of that nature. So you usually, at any given time, there's only about 80%, 10% of the managers in the industry that might be willing to change their location to come.
What, one of the things that I liked about your company is that you did talk about focusing on the northwest, and then you talked, we talked today about the western states. What issues do you find if someone comes from further, like Midwest or like Arizona? Do you find that being an issue where it's better to try and recruit a little closer?
You know, interestingly, it, there's a couple of layers to that discussion, this cultural fit. We don't see many managers from, there is some exceptions certainly, and that's rules, those are not absolutes, but I don't see managers from the south as much coming to the west, Alabama, you know, Carolina's, you know, the biggest state, Louisiana, all great states, all have professional managers. I just don't see a lot of managers transitioning into the northwest. Similarly, I don't see managers coming from Connecticut or New York and coming up this way. I do see managers occasionally from the New England states. But if you think about New England states, a very high process, you know, they're very democratic in their approach, their county meeting approach, very process-driven. It's not, it's similar in terms of culture. And so I've seen, you know, four or five managers come up do very well. Managers that come from the council manager forms of government states do well. Managers in California, they're well, managers from Minnesota, Wisconsin, have, have good history. Interestingly, I don't see them maybe coming from the right work states, you know, where they don't have a labor background and it's so critical in our, how we do business. Again, there's exceptions to that rule. So I don't want to claim the two bar of brush, but I think our best chances of success are focusing on the western half, meaning on the United States. Now, we'll get, we'll get resumes from all over the place. And we'll evaluate them all as if, you know, just based on their qualitative experiences.
Thank you.
How many resumes do you anticipate that you would get?
Boy, forty to fifty, is my number I started thinking. You know, I think the salary has to be dependent to attract a good number, and it has, we have to package the city correctly, and we can do that. But I would probably say not less than thirty, probably not more than fifty. You know, probably that forty, that pretty high range, I guess. So I could say I had added the argotia, about a hundred and fifty, but not many of people. Very, very much, I'm sure, seeing John.
Greg, I know that you and I talked about salary range. Have you talked about the salary range with everyone else?
I have. And Mayor, would you like me to move forward in that discussion now or wait until the radio?
Probably later.
Yeah, I was just waiting strategically until the radio be, I have to break it up.
Reprimanded.
Call meeting order? Please stand in the white suit.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please.
Counselor Bollin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Rizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Cam.
Here.
And Counselor Scott.
Here.
OK, we have a consent calendar. Are there any changes or updates on the, it's only the agenda today, so.
I'd like to amend the consent calendar. I'm totally kidding, I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
You're out of order.
I'm a second.
So I'm moving second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent calendar passes. I didn't have to do that today. OK, next up is the presentation by Greg Prothman. I was going to give a little introduction, but I think everybody's met him, so Greg, you have the floor.
Thank you, brother. Have a good evening. Am I in a good spot here? Or am I better up in room over there? Perhaps I'm over there. Well, thank you so much for the hospitality today. It's been great, and I appreciate all the work you've done with setting this up, and I think you've had a very day of learning and getting to know the city better. A couple of things tonight. First of all, I'll give you, I think I've given you a re-reported formality earlier about some of the topics that I've heard, and that would suffice, I'll move on to other topics. Let me talk about process first, and I know it's embodied in our proposal, but perhaps I'll go through it one more time just to make sure that you're all comfortable with the direction of heading. It's about ninety days process from stem to stern, from the day we start about the day we get to final interviews, it'd be about ninety days. That starts today. We've conducted a fair number of interviews, I've talked to a lot of folks, I've got a lot of good information. London Hurst has been very helpful in sending information up on concrete to us, so we've got a good start, kind of crafting the position profile. We should have that work accomplished in about a week, maybe a bit less. We'll extend it down, probably through London's office, I think. I'll ask you then to forward around the council for comment, and please feel free to red pen away if you need to. I hope they get it about eighty-five to ninety percent accurate, maybe a bit more, but just feel proud of our partnership here, we want to get it correct. And Mr. Mayor, if there are conflicts with comments or if you think we need to expand on something we missed, I'll work with you as the voice of the council and make sure that we get it correct. Once we're done with that, I have, we want to start advertising, and some of the guidance I'm giving back to you tonight is how far and wide should I cast that net? This won't be quoted national search because we'll be on a number of internet sites and periodicals that have a national audience, such as the International City Managers Association website, that sends out a weekly bulletin of all the available jobs in the nation. We'll be on that website, so I'll guarantee you that virtually every city manager who subscribes to that document, that will get that notification. So we will get resumes from all over the place, all over the nation. But more specifically, I But more specifically, I want to encourage managers and administrators in cities to compromise from the Western United States to apply. And as such, I'd like to send out about eight, nine hundred letters of invitation to those managers and administrators, and cities will say five thousand to say fifty thousand, or something along that line, I'll have to think about that a bit more. And so each of those folks will get a two-page document that will be a condensed version of our, our profile. Now, Mayor, you had mentioned to me that the council had put some work into a letter that perhaps would be helpful also to send out to the candidates. And I've been sort of thinking about mechanisms of doing that. One of the things I could do is refer to this letter on our two-page document and say, hey, if you want to read here with the mayor's health, I would say, you know, please go to our website, and when they download the profile, we'll also then have that, that letter downloaded simultaneously. So anybody that has at least enough interest in the job to go to the website and look at the profile, will get the letter, and if that would be an acceptable process, I'll make that happen.
Sounds pretty good.
Yes, that is good, very good.
Okay, great, we'll make that happen. And secondly, guidance and Mayor, on behalf of the council, is my sourcing thought process of sending letters out to folks, and the level of that should stay acceptable.
I think so.
Now, that has cost implications, I glossed over that pretty quickly. Each of those letters is about two dollars and thirty-five cents to get out, and that's all sent out, and so you can do the math pretty quickly, let's, if it's about eight hundred folks, that's probably close to two thousand, a little less than two thousand dollars a cost. So that's my first sort of cost item theory.
Is that your primary means of contacting people? Is that mainly?
It's one of them. Were they going to place another fifteen to fourteen hundred dollars worth of ads in, in various periodicals? And lastly, the people that I know personally that had expressed interest, and I know that might be interested in our contact personally.
What's the, of, of, would you say eight or nine hundred letters? What's the percentage of coverage of the pool of city managers in those states? How many, we are, in that size of city, how many towns are there roughly? Are we talking a thousand town, are we talking ten thousand town?
Oh, no, it, it'll be about eight hundred letters.
How many towns are there?
About eight hundred.
About eight hundred towns, so we're going through all the managers in that?
It'll be every one of them.
Okay, that's, that's.
I have a wood here, you have a hundred percent saturation, but it'll at least take a good shot at them.
Yeah, it'd be real close, not like twenty, ten.
No.
Greg, do you have any blast to say a list of clientele you've had historically, or?
Well, we've done some of that in the past, but I found oddly enough that the old school methods work a little better, because most city managers get sixty to eighty emails a day, and so if they don't catch it right there and move it into a file somewhere, it's gone for Mary. And so we just haven't found that to be real effective. A lot of associations might put it on, on their distribution list and send out an email for us, I'm always surprised at how, how it gets distributed out there, but that's not a technique we thought we'd grow up with. Other questions on sourcing?
Would you, council feel, as far as the, that amount and, and that amount of letters going out?
Well, what Greg told before was expecting forty to fifty responses. And out of eight hundred, I mean, that's, you know, not an insignificant percentage for us.
For overall, right? Because the letters aren't the sole source of?
No, it, it's one of our three topics, and, but it, it is, we found it to be the most effective, because a lot of recruiters will put ads out there, but we read one of. Our, our goal is to have every manager in the target area be aware of our, that's our goal. And then if they have anything of interest, then they have to begin with the self-selection process or the self-screening process, by looking at the profile. And the letter would be helpful also on that topic. So it's that internet process, I think.
So your, your number of addition was those communities that are five thousand upwards to fifty, or about those that are under five?
Well, then I would have to think about that in terms of level of sophistication, for what, you're about fifty or sixteen thousand population here. We could go smaller, but I want to think about that a lot, to make sure it's a good use of your money. We'll, we'll probably do, frankly, as I think about it here, we'll probably go smaller than that here in Oregon. Just because it'd be great to find an Oregon manager with Oregon experience, that'd be a, really a nice, nice accomplishment. So I think, but I, I don't think I'd go much smaller than about forty, you get pretty tiny in terms of.
I'd like that for the state of Oregon.
Okay.
I know our last city manager search, I believe we had two candidates who were under five thousand, which John was, which we hired.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
So we have a consensus to go ahead with the?
All right, thank you.
Sure.
So, once, we'll advertise for about five to six weeks. Once that's done, we'll pick the proponents or resumes, read all of them obviously. We'll screen that number down, probably to the top fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, maybe eight, and I'll, I'll see what kind of quality we have, and we'll, we'll take the best, the cream of the crop. I'll then arrange to have an hour-long interview, a forty-five minute interview, each of those candidates, either in person or by outside. You're using the internet, interview now, it is. I'll then review, obviously, their, their resume, their application, we'll ask them to put answers to, to, essay questions, get a sample of their writing, we'll also do a review on the internet, of what the internet says about them. On the application, I also asked them, asked them if they've ever gone through involuntary termination, I want them to tell me about that. It's not atypical, but if they hide it from you, that's a problem. We ask for months and years of their tenure, so we can look at if there's any breaks in tenure. It's okay if there are, I just need to know about it ahead of time, and I'd like them to tell me about it. If they don't, I'm starting to get a sense of, are you being honest with me? So then also ask them about any significant controversies that they may have been involved in. It's a judgment question, I get that, but I had one candidate who was the subject of a grand jury investigation, that didn't feel that was a lot of the topic to tell me about. While he was openly exonerated, I would have been nice to hear about it, because we found out about it on the internet. He didn't receive any further. So those are sort of the things I look for. Then I'll screen for those basic talents and skills that we described earlier, and then kind of measure a little bit for the things you're looking for also. So I'll get that number down to the top, you know, my recommendation of the top, say, you know, six or eight or ten that got over the bar for me. I'll then bring an executive session now to you, and get it to you ahead of time, so you have a chance to review it, all fifteen or sixteen applicants, whatever, whatever number that was. I'll bring a pile of the rest of the applications to the executive session, if you have an interest in looking through those. But I'll guarantee you there'll be a applicant or two in that top sixteen or fifteen that you can go, Greg, we'll rethink about this one. Well, now you know where to cut off line is. And while that didn't have the same skill sets or higher worse, so, just so you have a little confidence. So you'll have a chance to look at these ahead of time for a couple of days, to get familiar with them. We'll then sit down as a team, try to go through each one of them, I'll give you the, my insights, is what I like, what concerned me, where I think the strengths and weaknesses are. Well, it might take us about an hour to an hour and a half to look through. We'll blow that number down to the top four, five, or six. We'll then move on, working on designing the final interview process, if you want to use advisory committees, if you want to staff, if you want to get citizen committees, whatever you might like, you might have a reception that I have before. A wide variety of techniques we can talk about at that point. Prior to the final interviews, we'll do criminal history check, we'll do an education verification, to make sure they have the degrees sustained you. We'll do confidential references. On our application, we ask for nine references of peers, subordinates, and supervisors, who have had their last three jobs, they don't necessarily want to hear about their brother-in-law, or their pastor, or their work-related references. We'll check about five of those for each candidate, and we'll do references on each, each of those, well, we'll do five references per candidate, we're trying to spin out here. And then get that whole packet of data to you, again, ahead of time, by a couple, three days, so you have a chance to review it. I'll be back down again for my third trip, to facilitate that final interview process, and see if we can do it. So Mr. Mayor, that is a ninety days' worth of effort, consulting, and about ten minutes worth of presentation. Now, one thing I did gloss over here is the notion of salary. And I've contacted you each individual, this. My estimate of salary, what you need to advertise this job at is going to be somewhere between a hundred, and I don't know where your top highest-paid department director is, but probably a hundred dollars above, but where that person is. Let's say it happens to be a hundred thousand for the sake of this particular special, I'll get the right data from London here later, and about a hundred and thirty-five thousand at the top end. In my professional judgment, you're going to need to have that kind of a range. My goal is to give you enough flexibility in, in the, in the advertised range, if you find an outstanding rising star, who just has all the skills and abilities, you don't have to overpay that person, you know, you can maybe get him at a hundred and five or a hundred and ten. If you find a person at the top of their game, that we really want, that gives them five to seven years, that we really like, we have the flexibility to maybe hire them also. So that's my thought process, and I know you're probably going to take some heat for those kinds of salaries, but in my judgment, that's, that's what the market is asking for, for managers these days, to attract a high-quality candidate. So, Mr. Mayor, two pieces of guidance back from you, please. Number one, is, is the process that I've described acceptable to you as council? And number two, is the salary range acceptable, and can I advertise with that?
And did you want that now, or did you want? I mean?
Yeah, if it's possible, I get that guidance, I, I can include that information.
Sure. Go ahead, open it up, and what's your feelings?
I don't think now.
Let's start with, let's start with the process.
Yes.
Let's go with the process, so you're, you're okay with the process?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Consensus, or go ahead with the process?
All right.
And?
Mayor, just so it's clear for the record, let's go ahead and go by motion on this.
Okay.
You go by voice, but I'm trying to just at least a motion.
Okay. Can I have a question about the process that Greg has described?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that the process that's described by Mr. Proftman would be acceptable, and that we direct him to proceed accordingly.
Time to second.
It's been moved and seconded to go ahead with the, the process that Mr. Proftman has brought forward, and for you to move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, the motion passes, you have a vote.
Mr. Proftman?
Oh, okay. Oh, wait, okay, okay. I did too, okay. Salary, discuss salary.
Jason, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I know in our review of the, the past recruitment, one of the issues we talked about was the potential for the salary range to maybe not be quite aligned with our expectations of what we get back. I don't think now is the time to nickel and dime ourselves. We're looking at investment for ten years or more, seven, seven to ten years or more. And while yes, it does seem like a high, a high salary, there's a lot of responsibility, and a lot of high expectations that go with that. And that's, I think the flexibility aspect of, you know, we're not going to go out there and shoot for the high end, but to be able to have a flexibility is good. I just feel that that might have been a stumbling block for us previously, that we should consider, again, retooling that salary. If, if a professional consultant was saying, this is what I think is the ballpark for this.
Excuse me, Greg, just to clarify, just one hundred to one thirty is what you're?
Yeah, well, one thirty-five, actually.
Thirty-five, okay.
I think you're going to get what you paid for.
Exactly. No, I'm sorry, I just said that we know the numbers, I think you were saying a hundred over?
One hundred thousand to one thirty-five.
Is that what you're saying, is a hundred thousand? Well, I, I qualified a hundred thousand because I don't know the, the high end of, of your highest-paid department director.
Right.
And so I would only amend that, I would even go lower than that, but I wouldn't, I would like go higher if, if, to other work directors of a hundred and five.
So if somebody wanted to make a motion, at any, the high end you want to be?
One thirty-five. So what I would do is, if somebody wanted to make a motion, I would just say that they advertise in the opinion of our professional up to a hundred and thirty-five.
Okay.
And set the range.
Okay.
And I can get the range, I didn't realize that John was going to be, that I would come prepared for salary ranges, but I do think you're in the right ballpark.
Thank you. Another discussion?
Well, I would just like to follow up on Jason's comment, because I'm a little individual who expresses reservations about the size of the salary, and I was supposed to talk to Greg about that. But I'll have to probably back it a little bit, and I think Jason's point's very well taken, I'd have to basically second what he just said, that probably it's not the time to be dragging our feet and nickel and diming, and so I just want to, for the record, say I'm on board with the product that you have.
I think if we, if we negotiated, or if we, we saved twenty thousand dollars because we couldn't afford somebody that was really the right fit, what does that look like five years from now? Does that look like a hundred thousand dollar savings, or does that look like a lot of trouble? And so I'm, I'm, I mean, so it is a lot of responsibility, and I'm on board with that.
Okay.
I would go a title of one thirty-four to ninety-nine and five.
Ninety-nine or ninety-five?
Well, I totally agree with those comments that the other councilor made, I, I think that we want a top-notch individual, and that number reaches that level, then that's the market, and we probably would be real sorry that we didn't have the opportunity to give him the flexibility, or us the flexibility, we did, to make that decision, hire that person. If five or ten thousand makes a difference, that's.
All right, I'll go leave in five blocks.
I've got to agree with what everyone has said here, I think that the range of the salary should open some eyes out there, and get some response, probably.
And I, I concur too, I think that we're in a position where we can get the best, and I, and I think that it's worth that, you know, that little extra that we may have to pay, but I think it's worth it, that we do the best, so. Do you have a motion then, to go up to one thirty-five, one thirty-five thousand?
So.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we offer the salary up to a hundred thirty-five thousand, with Greg and Linda will be working on the, the other aspect of the range. Any, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes, now Mr. Proft.
Thank you, your honor. Last but not least is, I know you have to have a public hearing on the qualifications of the city manager, and I would like to have the position profile as your underlying document, that, that could be the substance of that comment, and I'll look to the various here and make sure that's the appropriate vehicle to use.
What did you call it?
The position profile, which outlines the skills, talents, and abilities, the education requirements, the, all the, what we're looking for within the manager.
Without seeing it, it sounds like the appropriate message, I think, and the other one we had before was just a list, kind of qualifications.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't here last night, but I.
I don't think I have been, actually. Just trying to remember what we had before. Sorry. Yeah, but I, but I think that's, it sounds like the right thing, I mean, I think it's out of public.
If you need something else, let me know, and I'll, I'll be there, so I just recognize that as a step in the process before we advertise, so. With that, your honor, I would.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little lost, we, what kind of public hearing do we have to have before we can?
I, I believe state law requires that, for a city manager's service, public has to have an opportunity, a formal opportunity to comment on the qualifications for the job.
Isn't that what we're doing tonight?
I would have to ask if that would, if this was the place for that.
Well, I understand there's a hearing, and, I understand there's a hearing appointment, but I'm not sure if it's before or during the process, so I'm trying to think. Like, previous. Something I'm going to have to get back to you on that, to be honest, I don't know, I haven't been through this either.
My, my previous experiences with other Oregon communities is that prior to advertising, we want to make sure that the public had an opportunity to comment on the, the skills and talents, or the qualifications is the best.
On the specific qualifications, not just like, here's what I want, and input, and?
On, on the document that we're proposing. Yes. And I think it's more of a formality, but you want to make sure, but I, but I think, do think that the state law is requiring, but I would certainly look to his opinion to clarify.
Well, what I'm saying is, I think that we, before we went out for advertising before, I think we did that, and that's why I was looking at you with this, I thought we had a public hearing on those, because it was just basically the requirements, the basic requirements that we had before we were going to accept the applications. Well, that's what I'm thinking.
So those changed?
Yeah, they all changed, and we. And I'm only looking at you because you're the one that I thought also was there, but I'd have to look back, because I, because I'm thinking we've already done something like that, but.
Yeah, just let me know what your process is, but in, in any case, we're trying to be responsive to whatever your needs are, once you find, do your research and decide on a seat, so just let me know.
Trey, I love to call a public hearing for those kind of, I guess, approval of the?
I mean, we involve the public through, through all the process, and. I mean, we involve the public through, through all the process, and interviews, and all that kind of thing, but it might be something new, but.
It may be.
Yeah. I think I'll speak over, we're doing their search right now, also concurrently, and I know their, their city attorney had a, had a, had a resolution prepared for their public hearing, so that I can do research for it.
It might just be something that that's particular to the city.
I didn't know, read that, read the water, but I just thought it would pass the law.
Okay.
I'll be away tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, that's all I had for tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, thank you for all your time that you spent with us today, and I appreciate that, and I know that I never got to meet with you, and it was a long day for you, I'm sure.
It was my pleasure, I enjoyed it, and thank you so much for your hospitality, and you're very welcome, you're available for me coming back here soon with some candidates.
Great, well, we're looking forward to that, thank you for having us.
I've got one question for you, Greg.
Yes.
You mentioned a ninety-day term in there. Does that mean that in ninety days, we should be able to hire someone, or?
At about ninety days, you'll have the final interview process roughly, and that should determine whether we find a suitable candidate. Then we'll embark on the negotiation process, and then we take it every month and actually get roots on the ground.
So we're looking at probably July at the earliest?
I'm thinking so, that's probably a good estimate, and we're going to get, I think we have already done, so we're going to schedule it a little bit here, that will be in concrete, that will, will follow pretty precisely.
July's good weather, it'll trick them.
It sure will.
It doesn't rain, it's good.
But it's not good for the water, the water quality you asked for, I mean, it's not raining that bad.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Greg.
Run for air.
If you want to take out, go ahead.
Thanks.
And next on the agenda is Iden McCallum, do we have anything to say to the council? Rebecca will probably give you a few.
I welcome Iden McCallum.
Thanks so much.
Take care.
See ya.
I do have something, a lot of waiting to come in to speak. I've noticed that all the painters, or a lot of painters doing on this building, and we ought to take a look at keeping this place a little nicer.
Yeah.
And fresher.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some, some work around here that probably did, I would agree with that.
Some relations out there.
Yeah. Again, I, I had to mention the, one of the lights was out here, and it's pretty dark at night, going down the ramp, so. Talk to.
I can talk to Jason.
I was going to, I was going to nail Jason, I didn't see that, I'd actually.
And they do usually do that kind of stuff in a couple of months, and it's.
Yeah. That's your word.
Yeah.
Okay, other councilor comments? And lastly, we have citizen comments, would you like to comment at all?
You're doing a good job.
All right.
Please sign in before we say anything.
I already did.
I will read the whole, whole spiel. Okay, if that's known for the business, you lose a jury.